Time is now 7:00 PM. And I'll call the city council meeting to order and call on Claudia Sinser. Claudia to roll call.
Counselor Geary.
Here.
Counselor Minkie.
Here.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Here.
Counselor Payne.
Present.
Counselor Peralta is absent.
Present.
This evening. Counsel President Garvin.
Here.
Mayor Drabkin.
Here, thank you.
All right, and I'll now call on Counselor Geary to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now it takes us to proclamations for this evening, and we have two proclamations. First, we have Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I believe we have some members in the audience from Henderson House. So domestic violence is a complex and persuasive problem in our community that affects individuals across economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and other societal lines. Domestic violence is not just physical, it can include emotional, mental, verbal, and financial abuse. Whereas nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States equating to more than 10 million women and men per year, and whereas in the United States, one in four women and one in 10 men experience sexual violence, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner during their lifetime. And whereas, 1 in 15 children are exposed to intimate partner violence each year, with 90% of these children as eyewitnesses to this violence, and whereas, the economic cost of intimate partner violence in the United States exceeds 8.3 billion per year from lost workdays and medical costs. And whereas, on a single day in Oregon, 1,123 adult and child victims of domestic violence received services from a domestic violence emergency shelter or advocacy center, and within the same 24-hour period, 300 hotline calls were received averaging 13 contacts per hour, with 118 requests for services being unmet due to lack of resources. Whereas, the city of McMinnville joins with others across Oregon and the nation in supporting victims of domestic violence, including local programs, state coalitions, and national organizations who are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and sending a clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated in McMinnville. Now therefore, I, Adam Garvin, Council President of the City of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim October 2023 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We urge all city and McMinnville community members to actively work towards the elimination of domestic violence by supporting and believing in survivors and promoting healthy, respectful relationships and witness whereof. I undo set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed this 10th day of October 2023. Thank you. And now we have Counselor Payne is going to read our second proclamation, which is Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Week proclamation.
Thank you. I see we have the Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting care bear, it looks like. Whereas, a community without physical or verbal abuse and violence is a dream we all share, and whereas any form of mistreatment of any other abuse or any other is abuse, either physical or verbal, and all people have a right to live free of abuse and violence. And whereas, we recognize that respect for ourselves and others is key to developing healthy relationships at every age and in all circumstances. And whereas, it is within our personal power to choose not to use physical or verbal abuse and to violence to resolve conflict, and whereas verbal and emotional abuse can be just as damaging as physical abuse to a person's self-worth, creating scars that are carried for the rest of that person's life. And whereas verbal abuse such as name-calling, insulting, and belittling frequently escalates to physical aggression, which often turns to serious violence. And whereas, we recognize and support the efforts of the City of McMinnville staff and our community in promoting respect and equality for all people, teaching conflict resolution behaviors, and helping students learn how to stop physical and verbal abuse cycles. Now therefore, we, the City Council of McMinnville, do proclaim the week of October 15 through 21st, 2023, to be the annual Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Week. In McMinnville, we call upon our community to observe the week and encourage everyone to take the pledge, "I will not use my hands or words for hurting others or myself."
Can we all say it together? How many people know it? Okay, do you want to have him sign a copy and leave a copy of this year? And if you raise your hand and say it with us, those of you who know it.
Not use my hands or words for hurting myself or others.
Thank you.
All right. And then I'll have the mayor sign this one and get you guys a copy. Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight, and thank you Henderson House for being here. You guys are a great partner in the community and do amazing work. That now brings us to our public comment period. At this time, any members of the audience are allowed to speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing today or at some future date. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature on Zoom to request to speak. Once your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic. You may send a chat directly to the city recorder, and we will announce you. Please announce your name and the city you live in for the record. Claudia, do we have any in-person public comments this evening?
Yes. Before we start with public comment, I did want to state for the record that I emailed a public comment from Joanne Busini this afternoon, so that's being entered into the record and will be amended on the packet to include that. First, we have Amanda Palonga.
Hi, how's everyone?
Good.
Good, awesome. So I wanted to bring up something that I think would be really amazing for our city, and that is being more bike-friendly. I know it's super random, out of the blue, but we have a lot of money randomly that we get to spend, and so I'd just like to throw this on top of the dollars and cents thing. Yeah. Anyway, I would love to throw this on top of the pile of things to do, and that is making McMinnville a more safe and friendly biker community, bicycle community. And so I actually got to, how much, well, okay, I actually got to go to Amsterdam in college with George Fox University. I was there for five days, and Amsterdam has 70% population of bicyclists. It's actually really phenomenal. They have bike garages, bike lanes, bike lights, they have turning signals for bikes. It's amazing, but it took 40 years to get there. You know, total cultural shift. I understand this is not a one-and-done, like this will be changed tomorrow, but with the planning commission and just things moving forward with making more houses and making everything just more livable, I just want to throw that in there that we can do better with bike lanes and making safe bike lanes, bike lanes that actually have like painted-out designated areas. I did a bunch of research and found that the number, there's three things, four things that make a city really bike-friendly is number one, prioritize rider safety, which is separating the bike lanes, making them their own thing, or at least highlighting them better. Number two, bike lanes are interconnected. This is, you know, having someone draw a map that has specific roads that are biker-friendly so that people know that, hey, stay off Baker or Adams, like stay on Evans, whatever, but it's, but they're interconnected so people can get to the grocery store using these backroads, right? And people know about them. And then number one, number three, slower city speeds. McMinnville already has this where I feel like we're really good with, you know, slowing down to 30 miles per hour in the main city areas. So this is, again, prime for good bicycle community. And my idea for making it super-friendly to everyone is promoting not just bikes, but you know, rollerblades, skateboards, scooters, there's a lot of energy, electric bikes now being used by the elderly I've found and seen. They can use these lanes. Golf carts, I've seen golf carts hanging out in the neighborhoods, like they would be able to use these lanes. So like very much all-inclusive, multipurpose, so yay.
Thank you, Amanda.
You're welcome.
That's everyone that signed up in person.
All right, and do we have anybody with their hand up on Zoom? All right, last call for anybody on Zoom. Hearing none will close the public comment period, which brings us to our presentations this evening, and we have Murray Paolo's Thank You to the City of McMinnville. Murray, I believe you're in the crowd?
So my name is Murray Paolo. I live in Yamhill, Oregon, not too far from here, and I want to extend my thanks to the mayor and city council for giving me some time on the agenda tonight. I'm here for one reason only, and that's to thank the city for the opportunity that I had to serve as your IT director for 12 years. There's a quote, and it'll make more sense as I go along here, but there's a quote that I wanted to leave with you first by William Arthur Ward. He says, "Feeling gratitude and not expressing it is like wrapping a present and not giving it." I have felt gratitude for that opportunity for several years now, and I felt that the time was now to express it. Why did it take so long since my service to the city actually ended in 2015, which is almost eight years ago now? There was, of course, pending litigation with the county. I definitely didn't want to compromise that. Then there was the COVID shutdown, and I didn't really want to do it over Zoom. I wanted to do it in person, frankly. So I waited, and between that and other factors, that led me to be here tonight. For those who aren't aware, Kent Taylor approached me about the concept of the county sharing my services with the city in 2003, and agreement was reached in July of that year, and I became a shared resource between the city and the county. Now, I'm a native of the City of McMinnville. I was born about five blocks from here, and so McMinnville is very near and dear to my heart. To me, it was an exciting opportunity, as I felt like there were many areas where the city and the county could build substantial synergy through my joint work for each entity. Several years later, at one of the city council's strategic planning sessions, which I think Kelly is probably the only one here that was there, but former mayor and city councilman Scott Hill asked me about my continued personal commitment to the city and providing that joint service. In case you haven't figured it out, I loved working with the City of McMinnville. It was very fulfilling to me, and I committed that I intended to work in that arrangement until my retirement, which is now about eight months away, so it's in this coming year. Those who were in the room acknowledge that things could, of course, be changed by the county at any time since I was technically a county employee. That did take place in 2015, the course change. At that time, I would have welcomed the opportunity to continue with the city solely as a city employee, but unfortunately, that didn't work out, so I had to move on. While here at the city, my staff accomplished many things, and there's two of them in the room here now, and I think a couple of them might be on Zoom, I'm not 100% certain of that, but the staff were amazing, and I'm sure they continue to be amazing. But we moved, first thing we did was move IT out of the mezzanine in the fire department, which was not a very good place for them to be. That was the first order of business, was to get them out of there and get them over into the community center. We were able to acquire and install the highly successful Lagos ERP system to replace the old legacy finance system. We were able to partner with police and fire to install MDTs in the vehicles, enhancing response and information available to officials and YCOM dispatchers. We partnered on a number of public safety radio initiatives, enabling much improved critical radio communications. We were able to partner with other management team members in the construction of this very building and the public safety building at the same time. We were able to also partner and bring the former Oregon Mutual building into the city's building campus facilities. We implemented a redundant server strategy using the server room in the community center and the server room in the public safety building. We implemented electronic ticketing for the police department. Some, I'm not going to do it tonight, but I have an interesting story with my wife about the electronic ticketing. She was stopped soon after we implemented that, and she wasn't happy that we had an electronic ticketing system with the PD. And last thing is that we developed an IT strategic plan. So we accomplished a lot of things, and I can't say enough about the IT staff. They were great, great people. There were many other things, but maybe most importantly, we had fun and we got things done. I appreciate so much the IT staff, and obviously Lori and Scott are in the room here tonight, and I think everybody that I actually hired is still here, I think, yeah. So you might be wondering, maybe not, but what happened to me since leaving the city, and this is fairly important for me to share with you tonight, because soon after my departure, I interviewed for several positions with the state of Oregon, and I soon, very soon, became an IT manager for the division of the Oregon Department of Human Services, and I still occupy that position today. I'm blessed with another amazing staff of IT professionals. If you look beside Lori out here, her twin sister Leah works for me at the state, and so we didn't get too far from the family in having staff down there as well. But I'm blessed with another amazing staff. The good news is that I'm still serving some of the City of McMinnville's most vulnerable and needy citizens today in my current position, and that, to me, again, is like really fulfilling. I was happy that that occurred. To me, serving citizens is what it's always been about, and I'm grateful to have that opportunity to continue to serve the citizens of McMinnville. The ODHS Division, where I manage the IT unit, processes social security disability claims and is responsible for thousands of citizens receiving millions of dollars in payments each month. I'm honored to work directly with federal government on behalf of our citizens and especially the citizens within the City of McMinnville that receive those. So tonight, I wanted to come back and thank the City of McMinnville in person for the opportunity I had to serve as your IT manager for 12 years. I want to specifically thank all the counselors over the years, the mayors, there was three different ones, and city manager Kent Taylor for that opportunity. And again, I want to recognize and thank the amazing IT staff, Scott, Lori, Megan, and Sean, and thanks to the department heads that were here at the time. I think Matt might be the only one left, Matt Scales, now, but especially those who offered support, excuse me, offered support and acted as references on my behalf to the state of Oregon. They were obviously very helpful. And thank you for allowing me to be here tonight and express my heartfelt thanks to the City of McMinnville. Thank you.
All right, that takes us to reports from counselors on committee and board assignments. I'll start to my right with Counselor Payne.
Thank you. The, oh, I'm going to mix up the name. Lipstick is what it's loosely called, the local, excuse me, just a moment. I'm pulling up our review. Sorry. Can Kelly go first?
Counselor Minkie.
Thank you, sorry. I'm sorry, I have nothing to report. Thanks, thanks for that. That backfired, didn't it?
All right, let's go down to my left, Counselor Chenoweth.
I have nothing to report.
Counselor Geary.
DEIAC meets this Thursday, so we're in between meetings. The Stormwater Utility Public Advisory Committee, which I'll be joining, gets kicked off on the 16th at 5:30 PM at the Wharf, the water reclamation facility, where we'll start the discussion on the stormwater utility needs. And then Affordable Housing, which I was assigned to, hasn't had a meeting yet, and then Murak had a meeting last week, but I was unable to join due to childcare changes. So that's my report.
Ready?
Yeah. Sorry. When your name's Jessica and you're trying to filter through your emails to find something that Jessica sent you, it doesn't work very well. Thank you for your patience. So I wanted to review something really quickly that Lipstick have been working on with Yamhill County and the Adult Behavioral Health, which ended up teaming up with Marion, or excuse me, with Polk County, which is the fentanyl awareness program that was extended to youth in just increasing the awareness of the dangers of fentanyl and how little it takes and how available it is. So there is a link, which is what I was trying to find, and that was county-funded, but it is very supported by the city and, of course, a program called Friends Fight Fentanyl. And the idea is that youth will, you know, kind of the see something, say something, and that's the website link is friendsfightfentanyl.com, and again, just how common it looks. It can look like Tylenol, it can look like candy, and there's lots of downloads available. If you want to share it or talk to your kids about it, we would encourage that. That's it.
All right, I'll go ahead and go. YCOM had a meeting today, but I had a scheduling conflict, so I'll loop around with Patty on that. Airport Commission hasn't met, will meet next month, and Fire District, we're in a fire chief hiring process this week, so we'll be doing panel interviews on Thursday, and then fire board interviews on Friday, and hopefully come out of those Friday afternoon with a candidate and go into negotiations and have an announcement in the coming weeks after that. So exciting times for that. And then council-wise, the board is going to have the IGA on their agenda, the fire board will on the 19th, most likely, so we'll be seeing that here at council in the coming meetings, and that's the next step for us to move forward separation-wise coming up. So that's what we have on fire board. And then Visit McMinnville, before our meeting tonight, we had the awesome opportunity to accept a grant from T-Mobile for the alleyway art project, so Visit McMinnville is going to match those dollars, and that'll kick off our first art alleyway and lighting project and trash enclosure project and just really be a nice addition to an alleyway down there on Third Street and be forward-thinking for when that Third Street Improvement Project moves forward. So that's what I have for Visit McMinnville, and now I'll call on the mayor on Zoom if you have anything.
Thank you. I just, I think our city manager will say as well, but our accounting department received a certificate of excellence and just want to give kudos to our finance director and accounting team on the work well done there. And I also had the pleasure of, with our council president, joining our representative Elmer to host Speaker Dan Rayfield on a tour of our district, and so we appreciate that collaboration moving forward. And we also had the pleasure of attending the McMinnville Economic Development Partnership Awards and helping to receive an award on behalf of McMinnville Water and Light that was focused on the collaboration effort between the school district and Water and Light, the creation of the emergency water treatment trailers. And then at the, at the state level, just want to report out that there is movement on addressing ballot measure 110 this year, and so we'll also be next stepping our efforts here at the city in alignment with that. So to the council, really, we'll have some language in front of you soon to propose to give staff direction for preparedness on those efforts. And we have another upcoming meeting with the school district, and our school district is also going to be hosting service days in about two weeks. And speaking of service, I just wanted to thank all the, all the folks that were able to attend and participate in Sweep the Streets and other volunteer efforts throughout the community. Thanks so much.
Thank you, mayor. That brings us to department head reports, and I'll start with city manager Jeff Towery.
Nothing to report tonight. Thank you, council president.
Interim city attorney Walt Gell. Our planning director Heather Richards.
Yes, so I wanted to share with you, excuse me, Aunt Pagano is not, she's sick this evening, so I wanted to share with you that we're going to kick off the Third Street Improvement Project tomorrow in terms of the engineering and the 30% construction documents. We have both a project advisory committee meeting and a technical advisory committee meeting that are going to be led by Jeff Gooden and Jody Christensen, our two staff program managers for that, so we're excited to see that moving forward again. And then we have been in discussion with the governor's housing policy advisor, the governor's working on a reincarnation of a bill for housing tools for cities in terms of production of housing, and we have been asked to provide some comments on that, so that's a great opportunity for McMinnville to get involved in that discussion when it's typically larger communities that are involved in that. And then I will be presenting at the League of Oregon Cities on Friday for McMinnville, a presentation on navigating UGB amendments.
Thank you. And now our finance director, Jennifer Collier.
Yeah, just want to mention the auditors have been in-house, predominantly virtually looking at our fiscal year 2023 financial activity, and so things are going well so far, and hopefully we'll have a clean audit like we typically do, and we'll be able to share that with you all probably early next year, but it should be published sometime after Thanksgiving, but before the holidays in December.
Thank you. Anything from our city recorder's office?
Nothing to report, thank you.
And Scott Burke with IT.
Sure, yeah, just on behalf of the whole IS team, I just want to say thanks to Murray for coming out tonight. It was always a pleasure working with you and just appreciate your service to the city and the community as a whole, so good to see you.
And that takes us to Zoom. I don't think we have anybody on Zoom. All right, so that takes us to the consent agenda. Is there any, anybody that would like to remove anything from? Is there any, anybody that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move, we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Minke and a second by Councilor Payne. Ask for those in favor by signifying by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda passes unanimously, five to zero. Now moves us to resolutions this evening. Consider resolution number 2023-58, a resolution adopting a contingency transfer in the budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024, and the wastewater capital fund and an appropriation transfer from the wastewater capital fund to the general fund and authorizing an interfund loan from the wastewater capital fund to the general fund for the purpose of a capital property acquisition. And I'll call on our Finance Director to present.
Okay, good evening. So the resolution before you will do essentially two things. The first is a budget amendment of the FY 2023-24 budget, the current year that we're in. And this is authorized under Oregon Revised Statutes 294-471, that you are permitted to amend your budget when something comes up that was unknown at the time that you were preparing the budget earlier in the year. And so whereas the property acquisition was possible, we just weren't close to having a sense of whether it would really move forward. And so we went ahead and built in the ability to, to do a budget amendment by moving reserve funds from, in the wastewater fund, up to a transfer if we needed to move forward. The, the amount of the budget amendment is large by McMinnville standards. It covers 400, $4,250,000 in what we anticipate would be a maximum purchase price for the property. And in addition, $100,000 for any closing costs that may be associated with the work. So that's where the number comes from. The 400, or four, I'm not used to saying such big numbers in terms of our budget amendments here. The $4,350,000 change, if you look at the staff report on the second page, it will be taken out of the wastewater contingency and moved up to the transfers out category. Then the second component of the budget amendment is that that transfer out from wastewater, the same amount will be transferred into the general fund. And then the $4,350,000 is available to be utilized through the administration department to purchase the property. So that's, that's essentially the budget amendment component of what's in front of you. Then also, which is included in Oregon Budget Law statute, the information about whether, how interfund loans can be authorized. And so we are proposing you also authorize the internal fund loan debt from the, the general fund will owe the wastewater fund whatever the, the final purchase price amount will be. And the interfund loan for capital assets, which a property is, can be extended for a maximum of 10 years. And we're proposing to do a five-year loan. The elements of the loan are discussed in the resolution as well as the staff report. But the, the highlights are that the not to exceed principle, again, the $4,350,000, we are proposing an interest rate of 5% and five basis points. And that represents a 25 basis points premium over what the, what, what the money is earning currently in the local government investment pool. So that means that the wastewater fund will be kept whole and more in terms of interest earning on the money that they otherwise would have had in their fund. We are proposing it be interest-only over the five years, paying out a flat interest-only payment and then principal in the final payment of the year. It will be callable after two years if it transpires, excuse me, that the wastewater fund needs that cash to be able to move forward with work that's in its portfolio. It will have the ability to say, hey, we, we need the loan funds paid back early and we will make that happen for them. Let's see, anything else? Oh, and the final element is that at any time, prepayment of the loan may be made without a penalty so that the intention is not to retain the property. And so at the time when the property is ultimately sold or moved on to a developer, we would finish, finish out the loan transaction, the internal loans. So then there's a third component in the resolution, which is associated with the environmental reports. So I'm not sure, I haven't been point on those discussions. So if Walt or Heather wants to mention what, what that is about and if there is any additional wording for that, that would be great.
The sale agreement that the city entered into with Northwest Rubber provided that the sale was contingent upon the city council approving the Phase One and Phase Two environmental reports undertaken as part of the due diligence by the city to ascertain the environmental condition of the property. There was one Phase One environmental report that was provided by the seller. The city undertook its own Phase One report as well as a Phase Two report with substantial amounts of soil testing and also above-ground testing for lead and asbestos. And it received a final report just in the last day or so. The, the sale agreement requires that the city approve those reports if it wishes to move, move forward with the, with the acquisition. And Section Three of the resolution provides that the city's acknowledging, and we have a staff technical edit to make there, we want to add the words, "The city acknowledges and approves the Phase One environmental report dated September 29, 2023, the Phase Two Environmental Assessment Report dated September 29, 2023, and the Regulated Building Materials Survey dated September 29, 2023 for the properties at 904 Northeast 10th Avenue and 835 Northeast Alpine Avenue." So the words "and approves" would be inserted after the word "acknowledges" in Section Three of the resolution. So we would ask that if you wish to approve this resolution, that it be approved as amended.
All right. Any council discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution 23, 2023-58 as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Chinowith and seconded by Councilor Minke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes unanimously, five to zero. That brings us to our second resolution, Consider Resolution Number 2023-59, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of McMinnville and the McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency for the financing to purchase tax lots, R4421BA03800 and R4421BA03805, also known as 904 Northeast 10th Street and 835 Northeast Alpine Avenue, respectively to advance the goals and objectives of the McMinnville Urban Renewal Plan. I'll call on our Finance Director, Jennifer Collier, to present.
All right, good evening. So, so this second action is a proposed intergovernmental agreement between the city of McMinnville and the Urban Renewal Agency of McMinnville. And this is authorized under Oregon Revised Statutes 190 that allows local governments to enter into agreements with each other. There is an existing IGA currently established in 2015 between the city and the Urban Renewal Agency that allows the city to assist the agency in terms of its administrative work and its planning and execution of the Urban Renewal Plan. This is, you know, within that purview of proposing that the purchase of this property is advancing urban renewal goals and specifically called out is goal number three, to encourage the unique district identity of the northeast gateway as a place where people live, work, and play, which is the part of the district where this property is physically located. Also, goal eight for development and redevelopment. And there's a potential that this investment may also make an impact on the plan's goal six, which is to support affordable quality housing in the community. So other details included in the report were covered previously about the cost and the internal, internal lending that's supporting this. And what this IGA specifically will do is the Urban Renewal Agency would be agreeing to use its tax increment financing that it perceives each year as part of its property taxes to pay for the annual interest payments on these loans. As it's, as stated earlier, it's the intent of the city of McMinnville to, to not retain the property, but to allow it to be redeveloped and support that process. Let's see, what else is important here? I think maybe a word about the fiscal impact. So the fiscal impact of this agreement does assure that the city of McMinnville will be reimbursed in full for all of the, the internal loans' interest payments, the interest-only component of it. In terms of the Urban Renewal District, that is an annual commitment of almost $220,000 a year that they'll need to be budgeting. But at the end of the day, it's, it's the judgment of staff and, and policymakers, if you all agree to move forward with the property purchase, that the long-term fiscal impact of taking this industrial property and investing in it so that it will be able to change its use to an economic activity that will be more environmentally sustainable, healthy for the community, and achieve several of these urban renewals' goals, that is, that is worth the potential that the, the property price may not be recouped in full at the end of this process. So I don't know if we've got our, our Community Development Director here, Ann Richard, Ann Richards, sorry. Not, not the, the former governor of Texas. But if Heather has anything that she would like to talk about in terms of from the urban renewals' perspective, or Walt Gell, or anyone else in terms of the deal itself, or what it's hoped and intended to achieve in the community.
All right. Any council discussion or questions for staff? All right, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-59.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Geary and a second by Councilor Minke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes unanimously, five to zero. That brings us to our ordinance part of the evening.
Before you move to that, there is, there is one more action because the city has taken action on both of the outstanding conditions of approval of moving forward to closing. It would be appropriate for the council to take action on a motion to actually authorize city staff to effectuate that closing and authorize the city manager to be an unauthorized signer on closing documents and transaction documents. So that would be appropriate if the council could consider that at this time.
Council President, I'd like to make that motion.
And is there a motion number or anything that we need with that? No?
No, just a motion will do.
Okay. I move that upon approval of sufficient personal property escrow holdback agreement and amount approved by the city manager, that the city council hereby authorizes the city manager to proceed with the closing of the real property purchase from RB Rubber pursuant to purchase and sale agreement authorized by Resolution 202343, and further authorizes the city manager to sign, execute, and deliver to the escrow agent all closing, settlement, escrow license, escrow holdback, and other documents, assigns bills of sale and other transfer documents, and agreements contemplated by the sale agreement that are required to complete the closing of the purchase and sale agreement.
Second.
I have a motion, a short one, by Councilor Minke and a second by Councilor Chinowith. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. All right, now that brings us to our ordinances for the evening. Well, we will consider the first reading and possible second reading of ordinance number 5140. I'll ask if any council member needs to declare any actual or potential conflict of interest or accuse themselves regarding this ordinance. Hearing none, I'll call on our Community Development Director, Heather Richards, to present.
Great, thank you, Council President and councilors. If I can share my screen. I am pinch hitting for Tom Shower this evening, who is out sick, so bear with me. But this is an ordinance to consider amendments to planned development out on the corner of Baker Creek and Hill Road. It's called the Baker Creek North Mixed Use Development Project. The mixed-use development project is comprised of four mixed-use buildings with two stories of residential use above commercial use, and then three, three-story residential buildings. It has onsite green space, it has a plaza, it has bicycle and pedestrian amenities. In total, there's approximately 30,000 square feet of commercial use and then 144 residences. Seventy-two of those residences are above the commercial in the, in the four mixed-use buildings, and then there's 24 in each of the three-story residential buildings. It's a planned development amendment that came to you originally as ordinance number 5086. And in that ordinance, it had caveats for what the planned development master plan should be. So we review it under that ordinance. We also review it under our comprehensive plan, and we review it under our zoning ordinance. In our zoning ordinance, we have review criteria for amendments to existing planned developments. That has all been provided to you in a decision document with the findings associated with that. The applicant's actions relative to this particular application is that they needed to provide a site plan that met the covenants of ordinance number 5086, and that needed to be approved by the planning commission. They also needed to provide a traffic impact analysis relative to their development. And then if amendments were requested, so if they needed amendments from that original ordinance number 5086, they would need to be treated as either a variance or a major amendment to the planned development ordinance. The reason it's coming to you tonight is it's coming to The reason it's coming to you tonight is it's coming to you as a recommendation from the Planning Commission because there is a request for amendments to the original ordinance number 5086. The traffic impact analysis was provided. If you recall, when this project first went through the city in terms of land use, it was in 2020, and it was part of the Baker Creek North Development Project. At that time, we had a traffic impact analysis that showed that there would be need for placing the signal at Michael Book and Baker Creek Road when the commercial development came online as part of the overall project. That's a planned improvement on Baker Creek Road in our transportation system plan, and it's brought online when it's warranted in terms of the amount of trips that exist on Baker Creek Road. They did a traffic impact analysis at that time in 2020 based on the worst-case scenario for the zone change. So they asked for a zone change to commercial for 6.6 acres. The worst-case scenario for that was 100,000 square feet of commercial use. The traffic impact analysis for this project was for 30,000 square feet of commercial use in the 144 residences. So the traffic impact analysis is in your packet. It did come back and did not show the need for the signal at Baker Creek and Michael So your role tonight is, since this is a quasi-judicial hearing for you, is to consider the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Per our McMinnville municipal code, the way this comes to you is a recommendation from them that's on the record, and then you have the opportunity to decide if you want to move forward with adopting an ordinance based on their recommendation, or if you want to call for a public hearing. So those are the actions in front of you tonight. This is not a public hearing this evening. During the process with the Planning Commission, we did receive written testimony. On August 22nd, 2023, we received a letter from Eric Groves. He is a neighboring property owner to the West that owns the hazelnut farm in the county. And then on September 4th, 2023, we received a letter from Rob Halliburton with Friends of Yamhill County. This is a map showing the location of the project site. It is 6.63 acres. It's located right there at the roundabout of Baker Creek and Hill Road. And it's currently zoned commercial, C3, with a planned development on it. The proposed master plan is as described in this visual. The buildings in blue are the mixed-use buildings with the ground floor commercial and the two floors are residential above them, and the buildings in orange are the So in terms of the criteria, in our zoning ordinance, section 17.74.070 provides criteria in which the city reviews requests for amendments to planned developments. And so for you tonight, you do have a couple of requests to amend the existing planned development. It was reviewed against this seven-part test. That's in your findings document this evening, and it was considered to meet that test in terms of the amendments themselves. The summary of the requested amendments are... They are asking that the maximum number of stories... Right now, it's in the ordinance number 5086. There's a condition, condition number five, Part C, says that no building should exceed two stories without a variance. They are asking for that variance to allow three stories, to have the two stories of residential development above the commercial ground floor, as well as the three stories of residential development in the standalone buildings. In the C3 zone, it should be noted that there's really no restrictions relative to how many stories can be built, and there's a 60-foot maximum building height. In the ordinance 5086, there's also, in the same section language, that talks about that step backs for portions of buildings over 30... Any portions of buildings over 35 feet in height must be stepped back to reduce the visual impact of the height of the building. The applicant is requesting that be amended to allow some elements over 35 feet without step backs. Those elements are pitched roofs and some features of other buildings in the commercial development piece to show a variety of roof lines, so it's just not all one flat roof line for interest. And it's up to a maximum of 45 feet, and I'll walk you through that. And then lastly, their third amendment that they're requesting for ordinance number 5086 is the condition of approval number two, limits the amount of residential units to 120 units. They are requesting to allow 144 units as part of their project. This is an illustration of the residential buildings demonstrating the height and the request to amend the heights limitations in terms of both limitations to two stories and then also the limitation of step backs at 35 feet. So the eve line for all the buildings is 35 feet, but to show the variety and interest in the roof line, they're requesting that that be amended to 45 feet so they can bring these different gables and pitches into play. And then in terms of the mixed-use buildings, these are some elevations of those for them to be able to have this differential of height with the roofs along. This is called center street in their overall master plan. They are requesting that this also be amended to allow for the up to 45 feet. Forty-five feet is here at the corner where they have a little tower portico to sort of center the project, and then the rest of the roof lines are 35 to 40 feet. It keeps it to three stories. And to give some comparison, in our residential zones, so this is surrounded by residential zones, the maximum height in the residential zones is 35 feet as well. So their request is to go 10 feet above that with their roof lines. So in the ordinance 5086, there is contemplation that the applicant can propose alternative design components when those detailed development plans are submitted for review. So there was discussion when the original ordinance was putting together of not creating such a narrow needle to thread that it may prevent a project from moving forward that's creative. And so there was the opportunity to... For the applicant to propose the alternative design components, and the next section we'll walk through what that looks like. So underneath that particular caveat, there's a discussion about location of parking relative to the buildings and the streets, and that the building shall be oriented towards the surrounding right-of-way. So there was a lot of interest in not having sort of this expansive parking lot between the right-of-way and the buildings, and to really sort of bring that built environment into a blended space in the neighborhoods. So in terms of their master plan, they have provided... You can't see my cursor. This is Baker Creek Road right along here. Their commercial buildings will have a face that faces towards Baker Creek Road, and there's this larger sort of plaza portico area as you walk down Baker Creek Road. And then as you come into the development, there's sort of the center street. So the commercial development is built in such a way to mimic a smaller type of Main Street environment. These streets can be closed down for events and also have that same sort of expanded sidewalk that you see on Third Street to allow for restaurant seating on the sidewalks and things of that nature. And then over here in the residential area, you'll see that it's all facing out to the public right-of-way. The one place where it differs from that is up here near what's called Kent Street. So this is the northern side of the development, right across the streets where you see the high-density alley-loaded homes that are being built there. When it was originally designed, it was designed with the streets going all around... With the buildings going all along the right-of-way in one sort of large box, and then the internal portion of the development was one expansive parking lot. And what we're trying to get away from is that sort of expansive parking lot concept. And so after a lot of discussion, it was agreed that because there's such a higher density of development that's close to the right-of-way on Kent Street, that having that sort of parking space between the road and the commercial development on the north side is an alternative design, but still achieves the intent of the code, which is that this is a pedestrian-oriented environment. And this shows where there are some pedestrian connections into the neighborhood from those parking spaces. This is a cross-section of the overall concept, so you'll see on the bottom here is the cross-section for center street and how that's designed with the varying both planes on the buildings and then the wider sidewalks. And then on the top is the overall site section north to south. So you'll see on the left-hand side of this where you have the parking lot that's adjacent to Kent Street, and then the center street, and then Baker Creek Road to the right. This site plan shows the circulation pattern relative to this project, both in terms of vehicular circulation, which will be the blue. Then over here where you see yellow, this is our BPA... Excuse me, this is our McMinnville Water and Light multi-use path that we have going north-south in the community. And the intention here is that this will be bringing people from other neighborhoods to this site, both walking and on bikes. And then what you see here in purple is a bicycle circulation pattern to support the project. And they have bicycle corrals planned for over in this area. So bicycle circulation can happen along Baker Creek Road to this project, as well as on that McMinnville Water and Light multi-use path. This image shows how it fits into the subdivision that's being built out there right now in terms of nestling into the neighborhood, the six acres, and how it relates to the homes that are being built north and east of it. You will see that there is this pedestrian connectivity that runs from the commercial development all the way north through the residential developments up to that northern park there on the Baker Creek north side. And then this shows how it fits into the overall plan, master plan for that development. Some images of what the project will look like when built. This is coming in off of Baker Creek Road into the project. There will be this plaza area here where you'll see the bike grounds and public art, and then that taller tower right there identifies center street. These are some other visuals of the project as it's built out. Some elevations of the residential buildings. If you recall, in ordinance 5086, there's comprehensive design standards in there that the city council wanted included in this. This development meets all of those design standards except for the three elements that they're requesting amendments to. And this site plan shows where those different buildings will sit on the overall project
Heather?
Yes.
I hate to interrupt, but just could you go back to that picture? How wide of a berm is there between that and the farming property on the other side? It looks like there's a fair amount of berm.
We're going to get there.
Okay, I'll leave you alone.
Yes, thank you. So, great segue. In terms of public testimony at the Planning Commission level, we received written testimony from Eric Groves. That's the neighboring farmer with the hazelnut farm. He is concerned about the development and the conflict with his hazelnut farm. He did not come to the Planning Commission public hearing, but he provided the written testimony. And then we also received written testimony from Friends of Yamhill County who were supportive of the project. So the Planning Commission discussed the letter that they received from Eric Groves and the concerns that he had. So if you look at this site plan, it shows the subject site is in green here. We have the Hill Road public right-of-way that divides the subject site from the hazelnut farm. Then you have just north of this, several lots in the subdivision that are being built out as single-family homes, and those are already approved and under development right now. So we're... Relative to this land use decision, where there is the most conflict is right down here on the southern side, but we have the separation of the road between the farm and this project site, and then also that right-of-way setback that you identified, Kelly. This shows the actual border of the farm to the city limits in terms of red here, and so a lot more conflict with that approved subdivision, if that's the concern, than there is with this particular land use application that's in today, because that's only the very southern portion of it. This is meant to show you how the right-of-way will be developed, when it's developed. So the farm site is over here on the western side. The road will be developed in such a way where there will be a row of trees on both sides of it, so that it will have that right-of-way as well as the trees as a barrier. And then it has that setback into the buildings, which actually this doesn't show the measurements. And again, I'm pinch hitting, so... Do you remember, Mark?
I will look for that as you have your discussion in terms of how far separated that is.
Heather, who's responsible for maintaining those trees?
The street trees? The street trees will be the responsibility of the development.
Both sides of that road?
That's a great question for the western side of the road. Oh, and then this shows where the hazelnut farm ends on his property, and then the buffer that's between his property and the street that will be planted in street trees. So the Planning Commission had some discussion about this. After the discussion, they realized that there is separation between the neighboring farm and this project, similar to many other places around McMinnville at our city limits, where we have a road separating the development from the farm practices themselves, but our development comes right up to the road in terms of the city limits. You see the up-and-down hill road, as well as other places in the community.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm. Well, there'll be consideration for the type of tree that will go in there that wouldn't have, I guess, you know, potential allergen impacts or contagious tree diseases? I don't know much about trees. To know, like, I guess, what, you know, a maple could transfer to a hazelnut?
Yeah.
So that his orchard remains secure and healthy.
So you could... There isn't a condition of approval relative to that, but you could make that a condition of approval with your land use decision? The landscape plan has not been submitted for review yet.
But it'll have to go through the landscape review committee.
Yes, yes. All that's coming to you is the planned development amendment. The other application has not been submitted yet. So the Planning Commission found that the criteria was satisfied with the conditions that you see in your decision document relative to both the zoning ordinance for planned development amendment criteria, relative to the goals and policies in the comprehensive plan, and then relative to the overall intent of ordinance number 5086, and they recommended approval with those conditions. Are there any questions? Additional questions?
I have one as a follow-up. So I understand that the landscape plan hasn't been submitted, and it's... Whenever that happens, but my understanding is there's no code that would require the developer to put in... And I'm looking for clarity. There's no code that would require a landscape architect or whoever's creating this plan to be mindful of that orchard and agricultural practices? So how can the city, or the Planning Commission, or the landscape review committee say, yeah, move forward, but it has to be this type of tree, or one of these types of trees to protect these agricultural practices?
Yeah, so that's a great question. Where you do have discretion to add conditions to a land use decision that aren't in the minimum standards of our code, which is essentially what you're getting at, our minimum standards don't have standards... don't have standards relative to adjacency to farm practices based on what you can and cannot plant. But because this is a planned development, planned development is, are asking for some more creative approaches meeting the intent of the code. It also allows you to put some conditions in there to respond to that request for more creative approaches. So you could put it in here as a condition of approval of your land use decision. And then when they go through a landscape plan review, it will need to meet that condition.
All right, any other questions for staff?
One more, not related to trees. I'm curious if you know, Heather, the number of parking spaces for buildings five, six, and seven. I know this is Dom's plan.
So I can, I can have that pulled up right now?
You have that pulled up? Great.
Yeah.
Thanks, I haven't got through the other 300 pages yet.
Total, there's, it looks, how I'm reading it, Heather, it looks like by code, there's 338 parking spaces required between residential and commercial, and they're providing 260, which leaves 78 shared spaces. Could you speak to how those shared spaces figure into our daily trip methodology and why shared spaces would be successful when it's basically 30% of their parking?
Yeah, so actually, this was a discussion at the Planning Commission as well. One of the covenants of the original ordinance was we didn't want a lot of, a huge parking lot in this area. So we actually put into the ordinance itself that we were looking for shared parking on this site and that the maximum they could have was 110% of what's allowed. And so the shared parking elements of it is based on the fact that the commercial, that the users for the commercial development will be there at different times than the users for the residential development presumably. But it's not 100% shared parking, it's a 30% number. But they did go back and forth at Planning Commission with this discussion quite a bit in terms of is there enough parking? There is, if you notice in the site plan over to the far eastern side, up by the McMinnville Water and Light Multi-Use Trail, there's sort of that little adjacent parking area there. There was discussion at the Planning Commission of do you set that aside for your guest parking for the residential units so that you preserve the commercial parking for commercial users without shared parking agreement?
Is there parking on that small little main street with how you?
Yes, there is parking on that. I can go back to that cross-section. It's very similar to what we have downtown, so.
To answer your question too, Councilor Payne, there's one and a half units, or one and a half spaces per unit, and those three buildings you called out have 24 units total per building.
24 units per building, but then 24 units, 24 spots, 24 parking spots per building.
No.
Thirty-six.
Yeah.
Oh, gotcha, so 36 spots, 24 units. So I guess my concern is sort of like around that. And perhaps we're not reviewing that, so it may be irrelevant. But it's just the distance the northern parking spaces are from buildings five, six, and seven.
Well, seven has plenty of parking right in front of it, but five and six are?
Right.
Yeah.
So that would be, that would be a challenge for buildings five and six if seven's using all that stuff right in front to the, you know, to the immediate east, then buildings five and six don't, you know, they're the ones that are essentially getting left to walk or bike or wheelchair, whatever, further.
Well, just to clarify, so the ADA parking is very specific as to where that's located relative to the entrances, so there won't be displacement of accessible parking for each of the buildings. In terms of the rest of the parking, our code requires a certain number of off-street parking spaces. We don't require location of those relative to the buildings themselves. The developer of this particular project owns the multifamily project that's just across the street. We call it Baker Creek South, the apartment project that was built there. There was discussions at Planning Commission as to how that parking lot is used or not used and what it's like at full use. There is, you know, the developer would like as much parking as he could get, obviously to support his project. We did put in the ordinance sideboards for the parking to minimize it and not maximize it, so that's what he's working within.
Is there plans for a, some type of crosswalk, this is systems development, I guess, but safe crosswalk at Meadows?
Yes, so that's already part of the other, that's part of the larger Baker Creek North development, including the subdivision that's being built out. And so that is actually underway in terms of development and implementation. It will be a rapidly flashing beacon.
Good on questions?
Yes.
Councilor Minkie, any questions?
No, I'm good.
All right, Councilor Chinoweth?
Just a comment. Living next to an apartment complex, I can tell you that the current, I mean, I know that the goal of the city at the time was to limit the number of parking, but the neighbors are not going to be happy with the overflow. That is likely to result. So just kind of a comment. I don't know at this point, there's going to be any way we can address that, given what's already been codified, what the state requirements are. But for those of us that don't live on the council near an apartment complex and don't deal with the overflow problems, it's quite a problem in these areas.
I thought you avoided door dings by parking in cul-de-sacs.
They do park in the cul-de-sac, that's exactly what ends up happening.
Councilor Geary.
Is there more presentation?
No, that's it.
Oh.
We're in questions of staff and then discussion.
I missed the transition. Questions, so questions of staff. Shockingly, most of mine are relative to the TIA, the Traffic Impact Analysis. And I guess I'll try and be more specific, but generally specifically, can you walk me through the assumptions they made and what I'm reading here in certain instances? And I can read those certain instances, but maybe you can start with a primer of sort of what were they looking at and what variables did they look at and how did it, what were the more specific levels of service that ended up being spit out of the Traffic Impact Analysis?
Yeah.
I know that.
So first of all, we as a city don't have a standard for traffic impact analysis. We don't require it of developments. We have been requiring it recently because traffic's been a dialogue for you at City Council. So what we rely on is the standard in the industry for traffic impact analysis. So the standard in the industry for traffic impact analysis is to do analysis of the access points and the intersections on the system that will be most impacted by the traffic coming off of this project. So particular to this project, we asked them to look at the intersections of Hill Road and Baker Creek and then Hill Road and the street that's just past that on, the intersection just passed it on Hill Road as you go into Baker Creek South. We also asked them to go down Baker Creek Road itself, all the way down to the lights, Highway 99, and so we could look at that and understand that and all the intersections there. And then, then in terms of the hours that they use for it, so they use the model for McMinnville, there's a transportation model for McMinnville, and then they input the standard for commercial development. So there's a standard as to how many trips will occur with per square foot of development for commercial development and then for residential development, and they do it at peak hours. And then based on those peak hours and dispersion across those intersections, we then have warrants. If you recall, when we were going through Three Mile Lane, we talked about the A, B, C, D, and F in terms of performance of intersections, that they will then look at it from those performance metrics. And if we get to a D or an F, which is in the city of McMinnville, it's .90 is where we then implement development standards and change the intersection, they didn't get there.
.90 of the VC ratio?
Yeah.
And do we use 8.5 as a general standard or .90 as our general standard?
I believe, so actually, I'm not confident with my response to that in terms of Baker Creek Road, but whatever our standard is in our TSP is what the transportation engineer used. Then, we don't as staff actually review it. We don't have experts on our staff team for reviewing traffic engineering reports. We do have a third-party contract for that. We contract with David Evans and Associates to work with the city and to review all the traffic impact analysis that comes in. They review it, they then provide us a memo as to whether or not it meets the standards or if it doesn't meet the standards, what sort of improvements would be required so it can meet the standards. I can tell you with this one, we all wanted it to actually require the signal at Baker Creek and Michael Book, just, you know, playing the card here. If the developer had to install that, then the city doesn't have to install it, right? But the analysis didn't drive us to that direction.
Many of my questions will sort of come at the bias of, I thought that would be where what the information would tell us as well.
Yeah.
So I would count myself in that camp. So a couple more specific and then, and sort of on the level of service, so sort of there's VC ratio that says that volume capacity. And then there's, then there's that level of service. And can you double-check that I'm reading this correctly for the specific area we're talking about?
Yeah, what page are you on?
PDF page 243. It gives a whole primer of the definitions of the levels of service for roads. And as you turn there, I'll read, "For unsignalized intersections, level of service E is generally considered acceptable." So would that apply to this road? This road is an unsignalized intersection?
Uh-huh.
And so that level of service that our TSP says is acceptable is restricted speeds, very long traffic delays at traffic signals, although it's for unsignalized intersections, and traffic volumes near capacity. Flow is unstable so that any interruption, no matter how minor, will cause queues to form and service to deteriorate to level of service F. Traffic signal cycle failures and frequent occurrences, for unsignalized intersections, level of service E is, or better, is generally considered acceptable. So our, what I'm reading there, and important to this, my questions and discussion are, the level of service we have accepted is what I just read, and that's what we're shooting for and trying not to go beyond.
Yes, that's considered the threshold.
So as long as they're not violating that very low, in my words, very low bar of standard of traffic comfort, that signal is still not warranted.
Yes, and if you recall, the, our level of service in terms of what we will accept is actually higher congestion than what the state level of service for their facilities are. And when Mike Bisset was here, I asked him, you know, help me understand how we got to this standard and this level of acceptance. His answer was, and I wasn't here, so for those who were, if I'm saying this wrong, please correct me, that when they, when they did the transportation system plan update and the improvements that were coming out of that, the SDCs relative to those improvements and needs to meet a certain level of service was really high. And so then they went through a value engineering discussion of how do we, how do we bring that improvement list down and the cost of the SDCs further down in terms of the improvements and then went to a level below that in terms of acceptance of congestion on the system.
So in order to keep fees low and development, be development-friendly, as it were, this is the trade-off that we're feeling, is, in other words?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if that's why, if that was the values, because the other, the other thing that comes into play when you're doing transportation system plans in your capital improvement projects, if you're in a built environment like McMinnville where you want smaller streets, if that's your value system, right? We want smaller streets, we want it to be more pedestrian-oriented, we don't want five lanes across, two lanes to travel and a center lane. That's also playing into that value system of that decision-making, but I don't know. I don't, I wasn't here at the time.
Okay. Yeah, at risk of going further down, and so I appreciate the answer of, you know, no experts in reading TIA's on staff. We bring in, you know, there's just certain things in here, sort of, they have this analysis of are these conditions met? And some are met and some aren't met, and the ones that are met are still sort of what I would count as violations towards warranting that intersection. But I guess I'll spend more time reading David Evans.
The memo should be in the packet as well.
Yeah, I just got a little hung up on the, I mean, I'm into the tables of warrant number one, eight-hour vehicular volume, all this garbage. So maybe I'll go back out a little bit. Can you confirm my understanding from reading the data and that the study was done, the Traffic Impact Analysis study was done in the field on June 15th? Is that correct?
Yes, I believe so. I don't, I'm not going to be able to see it tonight in my document, but.
Okay.
We have a timeframe in which it needs to be done so that it can meet sort of the project's middle.
Okay. And then, if I may, Council President, continue. Switching gears a little from traffic to sort of design and great neighborhoods principles, can you talk to me a little bit about, the main one that jumps out to me is sort of that buffer of inner core, outer, 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 as we get to the edge of the city, how that development should flow. And I know it's a little bit of a magic wand moment, if I could really just start over and develop it out, this is how it should gradually go. And short of that, we only have this one that is on the edge of the city. How do we get from sort of gradual incline or deep, you know, incline towards the center of the city to three stories on the edge of, immediate edge of city next to farm? How do we, how do we balance that great neighborhood principle design standard of trying to integrate seamlessly and slowly blend into the hills to the city core with this development?
Yeah, so I would say to you, we don't have any policies that say you can't have three stories of housing development on the edge of the city. We also don't have any policies that say we're going to have a 100-foot buffer between development within the city limits and the boundary of the city. There are some communities that do that to create that sort of urban-rural interface. McMinnville doesn't have any policies relative to that, and I would suggest to you, McMinnville actually pushes to put as much density within its city limits rather than expand its city limits. And so finding the sort of balance there of density within your city limits and expansion of your city limits to create that buffer is something that if this community wants to have that buffer, that's a discussion we need to have, especially as we go into the next discussion we're going to have tonight, which is about housing capacity within the city limits and not within the city limits. Those are value choices for a community to make. We don't have the policies in our existing ordinance that allows us to push for that. So for instance, in Redmond, we, I don't know if they still have a policy, but they did, used to have a policy under urban-rural interface where development that was, development would, the density of development would decrease as it got closer to the city limits. And then there was also a buffer of so much, you know, 50 to 100 feet from the boundary.
Could I make a comment?
Please.
I have, for the most part, living here over 30 years, have lived on the outskirts of town. And I, the first place we lived was over on Russ Court. We had farmland on the other side. We did have a row of trees in between us and the farmland, that was nice, but I think it was just luck. There was a little dish that went through there. Where I currently live, up on the West Hills, there is no buffer whatsoever. So I, I thought this was an interesting concept and that was why I was asking about it. And I don't think it's a bad idea. I think it might be something we want to consider.
Yeah, I mean, I would suggest to you, so that across the street is the approved development, that's in the exact same position as this one in terms of how close it is to a farmer farm. Draper Farms is right across the street from it. On the southern side of Highway 18, we're in the process of approving multifamily development there that won't have a public street right-of-way that will be creating an interface between it and the adjacent farm property. So if that's, if that's a value choice that this community wants to make, that's something we need to implement sooner rather than later so that we can bring that into our development program. If we do bring that into our development program... If we do bring that into our development program, I will tell you that's going to change your buildable land capacity within the city limits.
That makes sense, yeah. Makes sense for the answer.
Any other question?
Heather, going back to the parking spaces, when you look at Baker Creek Apartments to the south, do we know how many units that apartment complex is?
Seventy. Is that 70 units, Mark?
And then, if you look at, like, the walk score of that apartment complex, it's one out of 100. So it's heavily car-dependent. So I'm curious if, like, walkability figures into when we're figuring that shared parking requirement, or if we're really just trying to put people out there on an island. I, I just feel that those apartments are going to have more than, they're going to need more parking than they have right now. And so the shared parking thing I'm hung up on, I guess, is, if there's any other information you could provide with that?
Other than you as a decision-making body created that as a framework for the project to be designed, I, I, I don't know the, the, the process for how that decision came to be.
Okay. And then on the, the heights going away from the, the two stories, how tall is the apartment complex to the south? I know the drawing showed the 35 feet of what the residential zone is within Baker Creek North. But just for context, how tall is the apartment complex across?
They came in for a variance as well. Is that 40? 41?
Okay.
Yeah, so when, when that was first approved through an ordinance, I, I think that also had the 35-feet height limit on it. And it came in with, I, I believe Mark bought the design, right? So it was already designed. It came in with flat roofs right across, right? So it looked, it looked like the commercial development. And then we had discussion with them and said, you know, how do we get to a pitched roof program with a variety of different roofs so that it doesn't look as blocky? And so that's when they came in for an amendment to do that.
Okay.
For the one that's on the south side.
Any other questions for staff or discussion? Oh, Mayor, you have your hand up on Zoom?
Yes, thank you. Just on the parking conversation, you know, I think it's really important that we continue to make sure that we're setting our, our, not just our building, but our business community is up for success. And, you know, knowing that the, the council set this standard for the developer to meet, and the developer met the standard, I, I feel that it would be, you know, it's, it's A, not really what's on the table, but kind of more importantly, I think it, I think it would be kind of unfair to have the developer invest to meet a standard and be, you know, wishy-washy on that. And not to say that we don't need to revise things, but, you know, it, it would feel a little changing horses in midstream to, to be reviewing that, that decision when, when the developers already worked to meet the standard. So I would just encourage the council not to be held up on, on moving forward with decision-making. I mean, I, I understand if that plays into the decision, but it, but in the sense of attempting to, to change a standard when, when, when we're this far into the process feels a little unfair and, and really, you know, want to continue to foster these, these good relationships in our community, especially as we, as we do have a need to continue to build housing, is very clear. I also just want to say that I enjoy the different, the different viewscapes of the, or, I'm sorry, the viewscapes is probably not the right word, but I enjoy the different heights of the buildings, the complexities that that adds, and depth of character. And I think it's very smart that they called it Center Street. That certainly suggests exactly what they want this to be, which is anchoring to the residences around it. I'm happy to see a ground-floor commercial with two floors of residential on top. I think that's a positive, a positive step for us to see being developed. And, and so I'm, I, I'm looking forward to the forward motion of the council on this tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
And if I can, Council President, so I wanted to make sure I have the record correct on this. The original ordinance, if you look at page 46 of the PDF, the meeting packet, the original ordinance 5B is the one that talks about parking. And so what it says is, "Parking shall be oriented behind the buildings or on the sides. Surface parking shall not exceed 110% of the minimum parking requirements. Shared parking is encouraged." That's the, that's the language.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Director Richards. Counselor Chenoweth, you had some comments?
I just had one more quick question. On the commercial space, is any of this slated, and I, and I know we don't pick what goes in, but medical office space out in this neck of the woods?
So what is allowed in this development is what's allowed in the neighborhood. I'm going to stop sharing my screen so I can look this up. In the, in our C2 zone, which is our neighborhood commercial zone, and then you, you added restaurant to that. So in the ordinance number 5086, it says the commercial uses can be what's in our neighborhood commercial zone plus restaurants. So let me, and not drive-throughs.
Yeah, no standalone drive-throughs, but they could do an end cap if they wanted, I think.
Yeah.
I, I just want to say, I personally think it's well-designed. And I'm particularly thrilled with the addition of a more lodging, you know, more hot, places for people to live. We need this sort of thing. And as far as the Birmingham is concerned, although I think it's nice to have the row of trees along there to prevent, you know, the dust and stuff from a farming operation or whatever else, I don't know that it's, I would see density decreases for, to be around Birmingham necessarily.
And medical or dental, dental office is allowed in that neighborhood commercial zone?
Any other questions for staff or discussion? So at this time, if you'd like to consider ordinance number 5140 per the recommendation of the Planning Commission, or we could also direct staff to notice a plan for public hearing to consider PDA 3-23. Is basically what we have before us?
I'm, I'm on board with considering it, but I did want to see if Jessica really wants us to put something in regarding those trees as a condition.
I would, I would like the condition, I would like a condition, you know. I mean, Yum Hill County has been an agricultural community since settler days. And I think we have a responsibility developing next to farmland to be mindful of it. That said, I'm just looking really more for making sure that whatever is planted on the west side of Hill Lane, or whatever it's called, is strategic and is going to prevent diseases and insects so that the city doesn't have a responsibility to that hazelnut orchard, you know, that we're not being reckless with somebody else's career.
Are you wanting something that's just insect resistant? Or do you want something that's also coincides with, like, spraying? Or something coincides with height? We don't want something over a certain height, or?
Well, why not make it at the discretion of the Landscape Review Committee that it would not be in conflict with whatever was growing on the other side?
Yeah, that's fine.
Counselor Geary?
I, I don't, I have full faith and trust in the Landscape Review Committee that they will do that. I don't, I don't feel strongly that we need to write something to choke them like that. I mean, it's all, it's all going to be part of it. Nor would I understand how you'd write something such that you'd guarantee a bug wouldn't eat it. I mean, it's.
Yeah, I don't think you want to be that, I don't think you want to be that specific, but I think some consideration about it, maybe.
So what, what I'm concerned about is the lack of a code for the Landscape Review Committee to enforce, unless we create something? Is that what I'm understanding? Did I understa-
Enforce what?
So the, the Landscape Review Committee's only, so when looking at street trees, which is what this would be, the Landscape Review Committee has an approved list of street trees and a prohibited list of street trees. And that, that's sort of the boundary in which they work. If there, if you want to put some sideboards on that approved list of street trees relative to the neighboring farm, I do think our interim legal counsel has been drafting something for you.
Might suggest some language?
Of course.
I think you could add a condition of approval that indicates that the approval is subject to the Landscape Review Committee considering mitigation of insect and disease impacts to minimize harm to adjacent agricultural uses.
Thank you, Walt.
All right, does that work?
It satisfies me.
Any other discussion on that? All right, so that takes us back to, if you guys would like to vote on this tonight, or if you'd like to consider ordinance 5140 this evening? All right, and we move to a public, public hearing at a future date?
I don't find the need for a public hearing. I'd be okay considering it tonight.
Neither do I.
Agreed. I make a motion to.
All right, so the.
Sorry, go ahead.
Hearing, no consensus for a public hearing. We'll now consider the matter of ordinance number 5140. Does any counselor object to having this ordinance read by title only? All right, I'll call on interim City Attorney Walt Gell to please read ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 5140, and ordinance amending ordinance number 5086 in approving a master plan for tax lot R441800100 at the northeast quadrant of the intersection of Northwest Hill Road and New Baker Creek Road.
All right, any further council discussion? Hearing done, I'll ask for a motion to pass ordinance number 5140 to a second reading as with the condition of approval as presented.
I'm moved. Second.
We have a motion by Counselor Payne and a second by Counselor Minkie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Ordinance number 5140 passes unanimously, five to zero. Now.
I think you may want to undertake a second reading.
Yeah. I'll now ask interim City Attorney Walt Gell to read the ordinance again by title only.
Ordinance number 5140, and ordinance amending ordinance number 5086 in approving a master plan for tax lot R4418100 at the northeast quadrant of the intersection of Northwest Hill Road and New Baker Creek Road.
All right, I'll ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5140.
So moved.
With, with the added.
As amended.
As amended.
Yes.
We have a motion by Counselor Minkie for 5140 as amended, and a second by Counselor Chenoweth. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Or actually, I'll, I'll call on Count, uh, City Recorder Claudia to poll the council.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counselor Minkie?
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
Counselor President Garvin?
Aye. Ordinance number 5140 is adopted by a vote of five to zero. This is a final decision of the City of McMinnville per section 17 dot 72 dot 190 and action by the City Council may be appealed to Land Use Board of Appeals within 21 days of the date of writ notice of the decision is mailed. And Counselor Geary had a question?
Yeah, just another traffic question. Just confirming that I read in there that presumed end of build-out is 2026 for the, for the traffic. So all, all, all tables and calculations assume full build-out achieved at 2026.
Mm-hmm, yes.
What's the plan after that?
So if you know, and I'm glad you asked that question, because if you know in the analysis, I was just looking at that too, the, the intersection at Michael Book and Baker Creek Road still has a planned signal there. The question is, when is it installed? Like, when does it get to a point where it's triggered and installed? It is in our capital improvement program. It is SDC eligible, so we're collecting funds for it. We'll collect funds from this development project for it. And the city went out and did a study this year. Actually, we're carrying costs to build it in our current budget that we have right now, because we expected it might be warranted this year. We went out and did a study to see if it was warranted. It wasn't. And so we'll continue to watch it and do the studies to see when it's warranted based on traffic. And then when it is warranted, it will be installed.
So we're going to study for it year-over-year? Or are we going to wait till 26 now?
I don't want to answer for the city engineer as to how he's going to manage that.
One question I have. You said that the study they did was on June 15th. Is there any way to change the required window? Because that seems like that would be when school is not in session and traffic on that end.
We'll let it out to 16.
You want to have it during the UFO festival or something?
I just, the date on that is just, it, it seems like it ought to be back further in the middle of the school year.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is with land use applications, we have so, so many dictated statutory deadlines in which we need to work that when we were in conversation with their traffic engineers and DEA was in those conversations, I'm sure we were saying, how can we do this in the timeframe when school is in session? And get the application in within the timeframe? That needs to occur. And that's probably why they went to scramble and get it done June 15th.
Say it differently, the 15th was an, was an artifact of the time that this application was submitted. It's not baked into your rules.
Yeah. We do, we, one of our goals in the planning department is to adopt code relative to traffic impact analysis. Other communities have them. We would love to have it, because especially since it's been an active dialogue at City Council for the last couple of years. So it's on the list.
All right, any further questions? All right, that brings us to item 9A. No. 9B. Consider ordinance number 5139, an ordinance adopting a housing needs analysis and economic opportunity analysis for the planning horizon of 2021 through 2041. Population 47,498 people, docket G1-20 and G3-20. I'll call on Community Development Director Heather Richards to present.
Okay, thank you, Council President, councilors. This is a consideration of docket G120 and G320. This is our housing needs analysis and economic opportunity analysis that we've been working with you for the last couple of years. And tonight's consideration is, is ordinance number 5139, which would adopt the housing needs analysis and the economic opportunity analysis as elements of our comprehensive plan, volume one. Just so you understand, we have three volumes in our comprehensive plan. Volume one is what we consider background information, so that's the data piece. That data piece then informs the goals and policies, which is volume two. And volume two is what we use for our, our land use decisions and findings. And then volume three is our implementing ordinance. So volume three is supposed to implement those goals and policies that were developed based on the data. And that's our zoning ordinance, or our municipal code. So this, tonight's action is just to consider the, the data piece for housing and economic development in a planning horizon of 20 years here in McMinnville. It's coming to you because per ORS 197.296, we need to submit a housing capacity analysis. So that's the new nomenclature for the housing needs analysis. So, that's the new nomenclature for the housing needs analysis and a billable lands inventory by December 31 of 2023. This is baked into the law, and it's a result of House Bill 2003, I believe. And so, we've been working towards that. We also have an economic opportunity analysis that we've been working on at the same time. And the economic opportunity analysis includes a public land needs analysis, so we are bringing all of that to you. This meets your city council strategies for housing and creating diverse housing opportunities that support great neighborhoods as well as growth and development character in terms of guiding growth and development strategically, responsibly, and responsibly to enhance our unique character. So, just like the last process, this is coming to you as a recommendation from the Planning Commission. This is a little bit different, though, in terms of how it's delivered to you and the options that are available to you. So, this is a legislative hearing. It's not a quasi judicial hearing. The last one was a quasi judicial hearing. So, this is a city initiative. The Planning Commission went through their process, hosted a public hearing, they're making a recommendation to you. You have the opportunity now to decide if you want to adopt an ordinance that affects the recommendation that was submitted by the Planning Commission. If you want to adopt an ordinance that affects the proposed recommendation from the Planning Commission but amend it in some way, refuse to adopt the amendment altogether through a vote to deny an ordinance or call for a public hearing on the proposal. So, tonight, we're looking for direction from you relative to that. The Planning Commission hosted public hearings and voted on this at their September 21st meeting, and they do have a recommendation for you. Their recommendation is to approve both documents with the following amendment or amendments in the economic opportunity analysis. Their amendment that they agreed on and want to move forward is to reduce the park land need by 62 acres in appendix E of the economic opportunity analysis. And then, there's two other proposed amendments for you to consider, and that is to consider the removal of approximately 49 acres of commercial land need that's associated with the site-specific needs identified in the MacTown 2032 Economic Development Strategic Plan that are considered exogenous to the overall industrial land study and commercial land study. And then, to consider the removal of approximately 12 acres of commercial land need associated with the retail leakage analysis that is also in the economic opportunity analysis. And I'm going to walk you through those. So, to build towards that recommendation, understanding the process and outcomes, we're working on a population forecast of 47,498 people. Our planning horizon is 2021 to 2041. This is a forecast. It's not exact science. We have a lot of discussion about that. We're planning for 47,498 people is essentially what we're doing. In 2017, we started this work with our housing needs analysis and economic opportunity analysis. We applied for grants from the state, received grants, went into a process of a project advisory committee to work with a consultant to develop these recommendations for you. From that, we had draft documents of the housing needs analysis, which we're going to call HNA, the Economic Opportunity Analysis, which we'll call an EOA, and the public land needs analysis. By the end of 2019, it became pretty clear that that work was driving us towards the need for additional land supply to the tune of somewhere around 1,400 acres to accommodate growth through 2041. And then, also 2,800 acres for accommodation of growth through 2067. If you recall, we were talking about doing an urban reserve area and a UGB at that time when we were doing the work. Land supply was rapidly dwindling when we were doing this work. We also, the discussions at the project advisory committee level were illuminating an emerging opposition to the work, which led to some concerns that we may have another long-drawn-out growth planning battle in McMinville. And so, we came to you as city council and said, this is where we're at. How do you want to move forward? And we went through that sort of process of, here's all the different ways. So, look at a UGB amendment, and what do you want to do? And at that time, you directed us to finish the work we were doing so we could memorialize that and keep that investment, set it aside for adoption in the near future, and then pick up that 2013 UGB reman. So, the discussion was, how do we get to land supply in an expeditious manner? And so, we did do that, and that UGB amendment went forward in April 2021. So, in terms of preserving this work that we had been working on until then, we had invested about $220,000 into those draft products. So, at that work session, we had DLCD staff here as well, and we had a discussion of, how do we preserve the work that we've just done and the investment into it? We consulted with legal counsel. We then had a meeting with DLCD staff in Salem and to talk through it. And at that time, everyone agreed the way to preserve the work was to submit what's called a PAPA notice to DLCD, and we did so on May 14, 2020. So, that PAPA notice says, we intend to amend our comprehensive plan with these documents, and this is when we're going to have our first hearing. At that time, the first hearing was May of 2021 because we wanted to see what would happen with the missing middle housing bill that was rolling through the legislature at the same time. So, long story short, those drafts and work was preserved through that process. And then, just recently, in this past year, we went through a process of updating them so that we could meet that mandate in the statute in terms of providing an HNA to the state by December 31, 2023. So, what that meant was, we updated the buildable lands inventory. The buildable lands inventory is what land do you have left to build on and how much capacity does it have? So, we updated that, and you have to put a flag in the sand saying, this is, you know, where we're going to stop this work and this is, you know, where we're going to collect data to, and then we're going to move on from there. So, we included development through 1231, 2021 for that process. We also needed to include the new UGB amendment, so we had more land in our UGB. So, we needed to include that in our buildable lands inventory as well. At the same time, the House bill for missing middle housing passed. That House bill in it says specifically that when cities are doing housing needs analysis, they can escalate their density assumptions within their city by 3%. And only 3% unless they can prove they're building at a higher density than that anyways. But, we said, okay, let's take that ability to increase our density assumption through that House bill and put that into this buildable lands inventory as well. And then, if you recall, we brought in some land back in 2003, which we call rural residential. It's the Riverside South neighborhood, and a lot of it's parceledized, one and two acre lots. That neighborhood's very happy in their existing condition, and not one parcel has annexed into the city for development. So, if you have a situation like that of one acre and two acre parcels, and they've been in the UGB for 14 years and haven't annexed into the city, you can reduce the assumption of how much housing capacity they will provide to the city moving forward. So, we did that as well. So, there's three steps to growth planning, and this is important because normally, you do all three steps and submit it to the state, and we are going to be having a discussion about doing it incrementally. The three steps are, you identify what the need is. So, what is our need of land to support that population growth for both housing and employment and public land for the number of 47,498 people? Then, you do, the second step is, you have a discussion as a community, how much of that can we absorb into our existing city limits and UGBs? That's the discussion we just had about how much density do we want to allow up to the very border of our UGB versus not? So, how much do we as a community feel comfortable absorbing in terms of density and built environment within the existing city boundaries and UGB boundaries? That's called land use efficiencies. You then go through a policy discussion of saying, if we want more density in the city, we'll change our policies to get us there, and this is how we'll change them. And then, you, based on that, your land need goes down presumably. And then, if you still have land need left, you start having a discussion about a UGB and looking at the land around you and what's the best land to bring in that will preserve farm and forest land. And we went through that process with our most recent UGB amendment when we were looking at all the different classifications. So, right now, we're just in the first process, the identification of need, the data piece that's going to go into that volume one of the comprehensive plan. The land use efficiencies and the UGB analysis is not part of this work. That will be our next steps. And the state passed a program for sequential UGB projects where you can submit your land need analysis and then say, and next, we're going to work on land use efficiencies, and then, based on that, we'll work on the UGB alternatives analysis. They only recently passed that in the last several years. It used to be that when you presented your land need, you had to show as a city how you were going to meet that need with your policies and/or UGB expansion. So, we're in discussion with the DLCD about that. We would like to do the land use efficiencies in 2024, spend the year doing that and submit those December 31, 2024. And then, if there is need for UGB, do that alternatives analysis in 2025. I received a letter today from DLCD that I need to enter into the record that says they're supportive of the city moving forward with a sequential UGB amendment. We still need to work through the process and get to the work program, and we'll be providing that to you prior to the final adoption of this product. So, the decision-making process that goes into developing this product, what we do is, we hire consultants. A lot of it's very data-oriented, a lot of it's very scenario-oriented, just like the traffic impact analysis discussion we just had. Those are not skill sets we have internally. We do hire that out. Most cities hire that out, and there are consultants that specialize in this work. Eco Northwest is one of them, and that's who we hired to do this. So, they do the data review, they develop the data, and then, they'll do scenario analysis as well based on that. Then, we appoint a project advisory committee. So, a committee comprised of residents and county residents representing stakeholders of your community work on that data. They look at it, they review the data, and they evaluate scenarios, they engage the public, and then, based on all that information, they then vote on recommendations to the decision-making body. So, we appointed project advisory committees for the housing needs analysis, for the economic opportunity analysis, for the public land need, and then, just recently, for the 2023 update. That was comprised of about 54 people that served in all those different committees. Those committees were comprised of both experts in the field, so the economic opportunity analysis had people that were experts in economic development. Housing had experts that were in housing. Then, it had just community stakeholders. There was city council representation. There was planning commission representation, and then, there was special interest group representation as well, including friends of Yamhill County. The project advisory committee then made decisions based on what I would describe as three factors. So, the recommendations coming to you went through sort of this lens. The lens was, what's the legal framework in which we're working? So, in Oregon, in terms of how need analysis and potential UGB expansion, there is a lot of legal framework for that. They also looked at our local adopted policy, so the comp plan. How does McMinville want to grow? What does McMinville want to look like in terms of the built environment? And what are the policies we've already adopted as a community relative to that? And then, they had discretion of what is best for McMinville. That was the data-informed piece that the consultant brought to them. The data that they used was mostly census data as well as permit data. We looked at permit data all the way back to 2000 in terms of how the community has built out. They also went out into the public and did public engagement. We had 13 PAC meetings that initially put this together, two for the update. We had two city council work sessions. We had one joint work session with city council and the Board of County Commissioners as we were doing this work. We had focus group conversation with housing specialists. We had three open houses. We did four events, and we put out poster displays in both the library and community center for several months. So, this was back in 2018, 19, and 20 when we were doing that work. This is an example of one of the poster displays we put out, but it shows the type of housing that we need to serve our future population and that we need to plan for. And then, we asked that question of, do you want to grow up, out, or both? And engage the community in responses on that so we could understand how to move forward with that land use efficiency discussion. So, in the outcome with the 2023 update, this is your buildable lands inventory that you have tonight to consider. Everything that's in the light green is in what we call our urban holding comprehensive plan designation. That's the UGB land that's come in that has housing as a component of it. If you remember, we're going to do area plans for all that area as to how that will be developed with neighborhood-serving commercial and parkland and public facility planning. Then, in blue is our employment lands for industrial development, and red is our commercial lands. And the housing within the city is yellow, orange, and pink. The land need that came out of this whole process was for housing. For that population forecast of 40,498 people was 202 acres. For that population forecast of 62,803 people was 1,066 acres. That's additional acres than we already have in our current UGB. So, we assigned housing to all of our vacant or partially vacant land within the UGB and the city limits, and then, this is the additional land that was identified as need. For public and institutional uses, that's schools, that's churches, that's the parks, that's government. It came out to 94 acres for that first planning horizon and 335 acres for the second. And then, for... Oh, I'm missing my employment. Well, that's not good. The employment is about 188 acres for the first planning horizon, and I apologize, I'm missing that slide. Anyways, the total land need is 484 acres for that initial planning horizon, and that's what went to the Planning Commission as the recommendation from the project advisory committee and the public engagement. So, at the Planning Commission, they held public hearings, and this is their, what came out of that process in their decision. They had a public hearing on September 7th and September 21st. We received written testimony from Mark Davis and from friends of Yamhill County and Thousand Friends. We received oral testimony from Mark Davis and Sid Friedman and Rob Halliburton. Mark Davis represented himself. Sid Friedman and Rob Halliburton were representing friends of Yamhill County. After hearing the testimony and considering the public record and deliberation, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend adoption of the HNA and the EOA. With those amendments, we discussed one being removed 62 acres of park land need. We discovered a mistake that Mark pointed out in his testimony, which would reduce the current overall land need to 422 acres. And then, there were those two additional items for consideration. So, the two additional items for consideration were based on testimony received from friends of Yamhill County and Thousand Friends of Oregon. They provided written testimony outlining 13 issues that they had with the recommended products, documents. They had seven issues with the housing needs analysis, three issues with the economic opportunity analysis, and three issues with the buildable lands inventory. In a summation of it, Mark Davis provided testimony that primarily focused on the park land need that was calculated in the economic opportunity analysis, and I'll provide a little more detail on that. And then, Thousand Friends are friends of Yamhill County. In their testimony, they alleged that some components of the documents were not compliant with state law, and that other components of the document, they urged the Planning Commission to reject the project advisory committee's recommendations and use the state's safe harbors instead. What we did as staff is, we asked Bill Kabeisman, who's our contracted legal counsel, to provide a memorandum with his legal evaluation of that testimony, especially relative to the allegations that it wasn't legally compliant. And then, we had Beth Goodman with Eco Northwest, our consultant, provide a memorandum detailing the background data that was in question in the public testimony and how they use that for their local scenarios and then, their experience with developing these types of documents throughout the state. of documents throughout the state. So, we had those two memorandums, and then staff took those two memorandums, synthesized them for the planning commission, and provided options for the planning commission to consider relative to those 13 issues that were identified. We also asked our consultant to provide costs associated with any new directions to pursue and the staff time needed to do that, so that the planning commission had it all lined up in front of them. Is this legally compliant, not legally compliant? What's the data that was used? And if we want to change the direction of what's in the documents, how much time and resources will it cost to do so? And that was all provided in your packet. I believe that's Attachment D of this particular agenda item, both the testimony and the memorandums. So, in terms of parkland need, Mark Davis and friends both provided public testimony about the parkland need. It focused primarily on two larger concepts. One, that the level of service for parkland need is wrong, and it hasn't been met by the city historically. And because it hasn't been met by the city historically, it's equating to too much parkland need. We don't need that much parkland moving forward because we're not meeting that level of service in terms of what we do. And then, also, that not enough parkland was accounted for in that 2021 UGB amendment. So, when we brought in that UGB land, how much had we identified for parkland? And that we had missed 62 acres that were added as part of the Joe Dancer Park. So, we looked at that, and in terms of the level of service discussion, McMinnville has a comprehensive plan policy, 170.05, that says, "For purposes of projecting future park and open space needs, the standards as contained in the adopted McMinnville Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan shall be used." This was adopted in 2003, and this was adopted in 2003 because the same argument came into play back in the early 2000s when we were doing that initial UGB land need analysis as well. And so, the city took a policy direction and said, "This is our policy. This is how we're going to move forward, and we'll move forward based on what's in that plan." So, the Parks Master Plan, Table Two, page 11 of it, you have it in your packet as well as part of the record, specifically gives seven classifications of different types of parks. Three of them have a level of service that the city should be achieving in terms of acreage per park. And you see it here, two acres for neighborhood park per thousand capita, six acres for per community park per thousand capita, and six acres of greenways and open space per thousand capita, which equates to 14 acres per thousand capita. Then, we have a comprehensive plan policy that was adopted in that same time, in 2003, number 163.05, that states that neighborhood parks and community parks needed to be located outside of the floodplain, so that's on buildable land. So, those are two policies that are in play that really specify, how do you identify parkland need? We then have a comprehensive plan policy that states that the city of McMinnville shall continue to acquire floodplain lands through the provisions of Chapter 17.53, so that's our subdivisions and partitions, and we should, of the zoning ordinance and other available means for future uses, natural areas, open spaces, and/or parks. So, one of Mark's persuasive arguments in his testimony was that the six acres per capita should be floodplain area based on this comprehensive plan policy and not buildable acreage. So, the planning commission had that dialogue. They looked at the comprehensive plan policies, and they decided to stay with the recommendation from the project advisory committee, which was the 14 acres for parkland per thousand capita, and then allow the Parks Master Plan update that's underway during the land use efficiencies next year to describe where that greenway and open space should go, because the greenway and open space in the Parks Master Plan is based on functionality and not just floodplains. So, there could be means of it being located somewhere outside the floodplain that serves a functionality and let that sort of land use efficiency and master planning process allow, do that dictate where they go and not change it at this level. Then, the second piece of the parkland discussion was parkland calculations in that 2020 UGB expansion. So, Mark provided in testimony, they provided on September 7th, that the math calculation was wrong in terms of the amount of parkland need that came in through that process. There was a tax lot, so we had a calculation for all the parkland need that would be in that, what I showed you, is that light green area, the urban holding comprehensive plan designation, and so, we've moved that forward. There was also another lot that was brought in that came in, it has industrial, it has floodplain and a little bit of industrial land comprehensive plan designation on it. It came in, it's the county land that's adjacent to Joe Dancer Park, that's part of our expansion of Joe Dancer Park that was in the county. We brought it in through that UGB process. It's 62 acres, and we did not account for that in our calculations of how much parkland was brought in with that UGB amendment. So, we agree that that was a mistake and was missed, and that needed to be reduced in the overall calculations. Mark also asserted that the McMinnville Growth Management Urbanization Plan, which is that previous UGB amendment, had a finding in 2003 that 34% of the land for greenways and open spaces was on unbuildable acreage, and that this was not captured in the calculations for parkland need moving forward. We looked at that. The findings in that growth management urbanization plan indicate that this reduction was calculated and accounted for as part of that parkland need discussion and what came forward through that UGB amendment. And then, again, the discussion that where the greenway should be located should be a discussion based on planning and land use efficiencies. So, in terms of the friends testimony, there's 13 issues. There were seven issues identified with the housing needs analysis. For a high-level summation, it's really based on the friends, the friends testimony was, their persuasive argument was, "Use the safe harbors built into the law." Safe harbors are not something you can appeal, so if a city chooses to do that, then it can't be appealable. And the planning commission had some discussion. The project advisory committee looked at all the safe harbors built into the law, and then they had a discussion as to what the local data was showing, and when the local data was very divergent from what the safe harbor was, they deferred to the local data to make a local decision about what's best for McMinnville. So, essentially, it came down to using the project advisory committee recommendation or the safe harbor, and the planning commission deferred to the project advisory commission recommendation on all seven arguments with the housing needs analysis. The legal analysis came back and said, "None of the allegations in the friends testimony is actually considered illegal, so not legally compliant. They are all considered legally compliant." So, now, it's really a question of what's the persuasive argument. To give you some examples of the safe harbor, so there's a safe harbor that says 25, you set aside 25% of your land for streets, parks, and schools, so all three combined. And in our local data scenario that the consultants did, based on how this community has built out in the last 20 years, just in our public right-of-way, it's 25% of land is put into public right-of-way. And that's not including the other caveats as well. So, the planning commission said, you know, "The safe harbor is very different than the way we're building out in McMinnville. Let's move forward with what the buildout in McMinnville is today." Another one, for example, is the safe harbor for density is eight units per acre. The data that came out of our permit review was 5.05 units per acre. That's how we're building. We increased it with that 3% escalation of 5.45, and that's what the planning, that's what the project advisory committee recommended. And at the planning commission level, they had some discussion as to the difference between eight units per acre and 5.45 units per acre and how much density more that is. Beth did the calculations for us. She was at the planning commission level. It's more complicated than just dividing the two together, but based on her calculations, it's 46% more dense development than what we have in McMinnville. So, the planning commission chose not to go in that direction. You can, by law, make decisions based on what your local data shows. You just have to have a basis. You can't make up stuff, so you can either go into the safe harbor or have a factual basis for how you're going to achieve your land need.
So, those are backed up by prior cases?
Uh, yeah, right, all that. Thank you for that question. So, in the EOA, there were three issues identified by friends. I'm going to assume you've read the memos for this, not going to them in details, but through that process, the planning commission discussed those. And to your point, Counselor Manke, two of them are issues that have, do not have precedent in case law in terms of how they would be decided by either LCDC or Luba or the courts. So, the legal analysis was that they think, our lawyer thinks they're legal under the law, but if they're appealed, there's no precedent as to how the decision-making body would decide, and so, that equates to some risk. The two that were relative to that is, in the EOA, we have a discussion about other needed employment sites. So, the other needed employment site was based on the discussion of the Evergreen Campus. So, when we did our employment forecast, we said, "If we're going to grow by this many people, we're going to need this many jobs." You want me to stay muted, right? Okay, told me to unmute. If we're going to grow by this many people, then we're going to need this many jobs for those people, and that's a safe harbor, and so, that's what we chose in terms of the employment forecast. And then, you identify how much jobs your acreage will hold. So, how many jobs can you put on an industrial acre in McMinnville? And how many jobs can you put on a commercial acre in McMinnville? And you start dividing up the jobs that way. We had discussion in the economic opportunity analysis as to, in McMinnville, we have an adopted economic development strategic plan. There are projects in there that don't, that don't fit neatly into that square peg of jobs per acre. So, the Evergreen Campus is a great example of that. Very land consumptive, not a huge job generator per acre out there, but a huge economic development generator in terms of an attraction for this community and creating economic development in the community. So, how do you account for the land need for sort of those exogenous projects? So, the EOA Project Advisory Committee went through that adopted economic development strategic plan, reviewed all the projects and programs in there, and identified the ones that had sort of that exogenous land need, much like the Evergreen Campus, and that's what you see in the EOA under Table 58. And then, they identified land need associated with those, so how much acreage would you need to make that project successful? And then, we assigned employment into them. So, if we take the Evergreen Campus and we say it's two jobs per acre, we then start assigning employment that way. It's outside of that employment forecast model that's in the safe harbor that we chose to take, so it's additional to that. You can, in the Goal Nine, which is economic development, they encourage you to do your plan based on your locally adopted economic development strategy, because the intent is cities should be able to build and grow into the future the way they want to in their adopted policies. But this hasn't, this type of model hasn't been tested in the system, and so, that was a concern. It equates to 49 acres of commercial land, approximately. Then, there's also the retail leakage discussion. We've had lots of discussion about that. We have lots of analysis and data for McMinnville. We know it's occurring. We know it's occurring in a large way here, and so, that's a deficit of retail land. And so, the EOA says, "We need 12 acres of retail land to make up that deficit just to get to ground zero today and then move forward." And that, again, has not been tested in the legal system. So, the planning commission had discussion about that, and they decided that they wanted to highlight this for US City Council to consider. They felt it was a risk, but they didn't make a decision on whether to remove it or not. Sorry, my PowerPoint just stalled on me. So, the planning commission deliberation, several things came out of it. You have the minutes from those public hearings. I encourage you to read them. There was great, meaningful testimony during the public hearing. There was also great deliberation amongst the planning commission and a good back-and-forth between the planning commission and Mark Sid and Rob as the testifiers. But anyways, their deliberation focused, this is the high-level trends I picked out on it, that based on legal consultation, nothing's legally non-compliant. They wanted to maintain the project advisory committee recommendations when they were based on local data and scenarios, because they felt that that represented the community the best in terms of the future, its future buildout and what the community wanted to see. They didn't feel that the safe harbors reflected the current built environment in McMinnville and were substantially different. I gave you some of those examples. They felt that this is not the time to make decisions about land use efficiencies. So, if McMinnville wants to go from a normal, what's the current buildout of density, the 5.45 units per acre, to eight units per acre, do that during the land use efficiencies discussion and start identifying how you're going to do that and where it's going to occur and make those policy decisions. A forecast is not an exact science, so they had some discussion of, there was a lot of question of the data used, it's old data, we should use new data, how do we redo the documents? And the planning commission had some discussion of, what's the consequences? Because this is McMinnville's history, right? Is sort of the circle of chasing its tail with this growth planning. And so, what's the consequences if there is too, if we identify too much land need in terms of a UGB expansion versus too little? And they felt that the versus too little has had a human cost for this community. There was a great comment by Rachel Flores, who's a planning commissioner, about the human cost relative to her role with the Henderson House and people who are living in unsafe situations because they couldn't find housing, and that it's multi-generational, so it's not a near-term snapshot, it's a long-term snapshot. And if there's too much land identified, it's not egregious in terms of the overall impact to the Yamhill County EFU acreage, and so, we just continue to grow into it. So, to give you perspective, 422 acres, if we expanded by that much, even after doing land use efficiencies, and it's all on EFU acreage land in Yamhill County, it will be 2/10 of 1% of the overall EFU land. So, they discussed that. In the OAR, there's language that specifically says that the 20-year need determinations should be based on the best available information and methodologies and should not be held to an unreasonably high level of precision. They also discuss the sort of, do we update all the data with new census data and new population forecasts? If you read the friends' testimony, they say that we should use the population forecast that came out in June 30, 2020. If you remember the timeline, I told you, we had already finished our documents by then, and we would have to go back and redo all of them. And they decided that that's not worth the time and resources to do that. The current law says we're going to be updating and submitting every eight years to the state, so based on how long it takes us to get through this, we'll probably be at this again in five years' time. So, in the, the results of the planning commission recommendation to you is 202 acres for housing, 32 acres for public land need, because there's the recommendation to reduce it by 62, and then, we have a final land need of 422 acres. This will probably go down when we go through the land use efficiency analysis. 422 acres is 1/10 of 1% of the total land acreage in Yamhill County, and if it was all EFU land, it'd be 2/10 of 1%. So, before you tonight is a decision to make as to whether you adopt the ordinance, adopt an ordinance, and we'll write it. You don't have an ordinance in front of you, and you don't have findings. It's very deliberate. We want to find out what you want to do. We would bring back an ordinance for you to adopt based on the recommendation from the planning commission, or if you want to adopt an ordinance and give us direction to do it in an amended form, or if you don't want to adopt anything and not submit anything to the state, or if you want to have a public hearing. If you do want to have a public hearing, we recommend that it be on October 24th, based on the timeframe we're working on.
Thank you, Heather. This time, we'll open it up for council discussion and questions of staff. Counselor Manke? Counselor Manke?
I've been reading this very carefully and I've served on these PACs for quite a while. Personally, I'd like to see this adopted with Planning Commission's recommendations. I feel like there's been a tremendous amount of looking at this over the, since, what, 2018? Most of these have been looked at for a number of years now. I know that Thousand Friends and Mark Davis both have given careful, considered thought to this. And I think most of what they've objected to, generally speaking, is held true through the whole process. And I think all of their objections, except for the two things that this Planning Commission has dropped, speak to things that are already precedent that we can reasonably stand by in any kind of legal inspection. So I feel very strongly that we should go with the Planning Commission's suggestion.
All right, Counselor Payne?
I agree with Counselor Manke.
So just, just for my clarification, you were talking about the Planning Commission recommendation. They sort of have a Plan A and a Plan B. One is reduce the parkland need by 62 acres. And the other one is reduce parkland need by 62 acres and also remove the, what I'll call exogenous employment sites and the retail leakage acreage.
Is that the 12 acres?
Yeah, so that would be, it's approximately because the employment numbers get reassigned, but it will be somewhere approximately 49 acres and 12 acres.
Yes, both of those.
Counselor Chin with thoughts?
Yeah, I would lean toward only taking the recommendation for the parkland and not for the two commercial pieces of land.
So you'd like to adopt it without the site-specific needs and retail leakage identified and the?
Well, we clearly had a mistake on the parkland. So I, and I, and I feel like we can't even, we haven't been able to keep up with the requirements heretofore for, at the 14 acres per thousand. So yeah, given we have a mistake and we haven't been able to keep up, I would, I would lean toward agreeing with the proposal by the, by the Planning Commission that that acreage needs to be removed. I am not necessarily in favor, although I won't object on the two commercial pieces. I think, I think we need more commercial land. And I think removing commercial land out of our inventory is not something that is in the best interest of our citizens. We heard some really strong testimony about how desperate we need commercial land and more commercial options in this community. And I listened to my mother, and my mother was all over me about needing more commercial options in McMinnville. And so I would lean to not want to take those out. But again, you know, I, I'm not really strong on that way. What I am really strong on is listening to the PAC and the, and the Planning Commission's efforts that they put forward to bring it to this point. I, I think I would, I don't want to redo the work that they've done. They've done an excellent job so far.
And if I can, because my PowerPoint didn't have this and I feel it was deficient. The land need identified for employment land was 29 acres of industrial land and 159 acres of commercial land. So removing the approximate 61 acres will get you a little, under 100 acres of land need for commercial land.
If we're moving, removing industrial land, which I think we do have plenty of excess on, I'm not as reticent to do that. It's the commercial land that I don't want to see cut down.
Yeah, so those two, those two elements would be commercial land need that are, yeah.
Counselor Geary?
Sorry, I was just trying to stay focused. I'm getting a little weary-eyed. I was just trying to pull up how you're phrasing them here, that the sort of direct city staff to draft an ordinance with the land need associated with the site-specific needs and retail leakage identified and without. But I don't see anything about the parks in there. Are they either or or?
The, the Planning Commission took a motion that said, are, what they're sending to you, RE reduces that 62 acres as their recommendation. And then the two other areas that they looked at as may have some risk in it, they wanted to highlight that for you and have you make that decision.
Okay, so, so the parks aren't up for discussion at the moment?
Unless you want to put it back in there, but that was, their decision was to remove it.
Okay.
62 acres.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I, I, I would love to correct that one. I'd love to keep those in there, but I understand that I probably won't win that arm wrestling match. And so I'd be, I'd be more inclined to be without the land needed associated with the specific site needs and retail leakage identified is, is where I would be. So option two. I'm without, yeah.
Yeah, so, and to remove those two elements, because I'm also weary, so I'm sorry. I didn't do a great job spelling this all out for you. It's about $3,500 and just a couple of days of work. So we did get from our consultant just how much these different things will cost.
At limbo?
All right. It doesn't sound like anybody's interested in a public hearing, correct?
No.
I, yeah, I don't think, I, I, I think the, I think the community was able to be heard up to this point. And I feel comfortable making the decision with what's in front of us and a little more discussion and dialogue and more time from staff.
Sounds good. Mayor Drapkin, are you, have any thoughts?
No, I, I think it's, no, no thoughts, thanks.
Okay. Heather, could you speak to the total acreage in the, the large number? I think it was called the Urban Reserve or not the?
Oh, the Urban Reserve area?
Yeah. And why that number is so big? And what, what effect does that have? Is it just kind of like a placeholder in time or does it?
Yeah, so a great question. What we have to provide to the state is sort of that 20-year planning horizon, so that population of 47,498. I have come to you several times and said, I think in McMinnville, I would recommend you have an urban reserve area. So we identify where we're going in the future. And, you know, then it's just a discussion of how much and when and not this sort of constant, long battles that you have here. So that second piece is sort of prepping the way for an analysis of that urban reserve area. So as, you know, we were investing in the consultants and the public engagement times. So we just thought we'd do them both at the same time.
Okay. So any other discussion? Questions of staff? It's good to move forward, it sounds like. So with that, I'll ask for a motion. You have really two options in front of you. It sounds like we have consensus for the most part on option A.
I, I move that we, I make a motion that we go with option A.
So to clarify again for me.
Is that number one?
You're, you're providing direction to staff to draft an ordinance and findings that either identify the Planning Commission recommendation with just the 62 acres of parkland need removed or ordinance and findings with the direction of removing the 62 acres plus the, the two other considerations of commercial land need. That's the exogenous sites and the retail leakage. That's, that's what I've heard from you in your discussions as A and B.
Yes.
I'm two.
Yeah, you're, you're, in your packet, it's 1, 2, 3, 4. On my script, it's A, B, C, D. So Counselor Manke made a motion to Direct City Staff to approve docket G120 and G320, adopting housing needs analysis and economic opportunity analysis per the Planning Commission's recommendation, which removes the 62 parkland acres with the land need associated with the specific site needs and retail leakage identified and the current economic opportunity analysis, which is the two things Planning Director Richards highlighted at the end of her presentation.
I, I just want to say, I mean, I'm sympathetic. Believe me, I think we need more, I think we need more commercial without a doubt. And I think parks, I hate to see them cut. But by the same token, we have something here that I think will be, you know, there's legal precedent. We can go for it. And I think there's opportunities perhaps in the future to, you know, where we're actually looking at how this will be calculated and what's the next piece of it?
Land use efficiency.
Yeah, the land use efficiency, things may change. In our favor. So we've got something before us tonight that is legally defensible. I think it would be a good thing to just pass it tonight and look forward to the future.
Well, yeah, we're passing this tonight to have them bring this back so we can pass it.
Right, you're providing.
Yeah, have it, yes. Okay, have you agreed to that? Yes.
You're providing direction because we don't have an ordinance for you or findings.
Yes, we're providing direction.
We want to draft it on your direction.
All right, so we have a motion on the table by Counselor Manke. Do I hear a second?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we have to direct staff.
Okay, and the motion?
We're on this one. We're on yours.
The motion is that we're including the commercial and retail leakage land.
We're including it.
Yeah.
Second?
Okay.
So I have a motion by Counselor Manke and a second by Counselor Chin with?
I'm sorry, I'm clarifying again. I want to make sure Counselor Chin understands it's removing that as land need, those two items.
No, we're removing it. I, I agree with you, but it's better to go ahead.
Yes, that, I thought.
Wait, with the land need?
Yeah, it says with the land need. A is with the land need. That's what I read into the record was with the land need.
Okay.
Are you moving?
It's not my, what I was going for.
There's the problem, okay.
What he read is what I went for.
If you all turn to page.
Where's your?
I'm looking at the.
Well, thank you.
To be clear, what the Planning Commission recommended was that we remove the parkland and we keep the commercial land. But they wanted us to be aware there was a potential risk there.
Right.
So if we're going to go, if we're going to go with, with the actual recommendation from the Planning Commission, we include the commercial land.
Is your fear, Counselor Chin with, where the land might come from? Is it your, is a concern where the land designated in these, like where the commercial land might be geographically?
I don't, I don't have any real concern about where, no. I, I just want to keep the acreage present that we are hoping to eventually build out to commercial because we have had a consistent, we, we have a problem where we do not have enough commercial land. That's been an ongoing problem. We do not have enough commercial. We do not have enough residential. We have plenty of industrial. So what I don't want to do is cuff that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, no, I don't want one. That was not my intent. I apologize.
Because see, like I said, I want to, I want to keep what the Planning Commission and the PACs have put before us. And that's what they, one is what they put before us.
Well, the Planning Commission backed off because there's no legal precedent for what you're suggesting.
Yeah, so the Planning Commission recommendation was for city councils to consider the risk of those two elements. They, they did not make a decision on that.
It cost us a lot of money if we go in and they don't accept it.
So point of clarity, if a motion was voted down, could another motion be made this evening?
Or, or we just withdraw it? Can we just back?
Yeah, I'll just withdraw the motion.
I think you're.
I, I want the motion that, no, I, I do want the motion to stay as it is without, including the land needed associated with specific site needs and retail leakage identified in the current economic opportunity analysis.
We have a motion on the table by Counselor Manke for option two in your packet on page 12 of the PDF to not include the land needs associated with specific site needs and retail leakage identified in the current economic opportunity analysis.
Because there will be opportunities down the road under the efficiency analysis to possibly get it back.
Okay, is there a second for Counselor Manke's?
Second.
So we have a motion for option two, not including the lands by Counselor Manke and a second by Counselor Geary. All those, any further discussion?
I just have one question because the wheels are turning really slow right now. Because I feel like you would probably know this off the top of your head or have it more readily accessible. Heather, what's the adjustment that we're talking about in reduction of commercial versus industrial? Just, very like, break it for me.
So right now you have identified 159 acres of commercial land need that we don't have within the city. With, with removing those two elements that have been identified by the Planning Commission for you to look at that could be risky, it, I would say it's probably going to remove another 60 acres in the end after we do all the calc's. So it'll get you down to 99 acres of commercial land need deficit.
And then industrial?
29 acres and housing 202 acres and public and institutional land 32 acres.
So the, what's the reduction in industrial? The reduction is 29 or 229?
There's no, there's no reduction in industrial. It's existing deficit of 29. It will remain a deficit of 29 acres. I think we'll get rid of that deficit when we look at the higher density we want to see in the innovation campus.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm done.
Point of clarity for Walt. If this was to not pass unanimously, but it passed, it would need to be read, a second reading on the 24th?
This is just a motion to direct staff.
Okay.
Oh, gotcha.
To draft an ordinance.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Clarity here. We say there's a risk because, and that risk is simply because at this point we do not have a previous case to see how DLCD ruled, correct? It's not because we actually think there's a potential risk. It's just we don't, we don't have clarity because nobody's ever gone down this particular path before. Am I understanding that correctly? Yeah.
There's local data to support it though.
And, and so we're talking about more than a third of the current commercial shortage that would be cut off if we go down this path. Okay, thank you for that clarity.
But not, but not really because they're adjusting the shortage. Like they're not saying, because this is to 41, right? So.
But it's based upon what we say here is the land that they're going to assess or they're going to, they're going to pick for it down the road. So if we say we only need 99 acres, they're not going to be looking to bring in more than that in our growth going forward.
I understand. I guess I'm, I'm kind of weighing the, the, um, the industrial and the commercial. Commercial is great. Commercial can be 4,500 square feet. You know, that's really small. And so I'm, I'm more concerned about the industrial deficiency at this point, but also we have a massive housing shortage that we have to handle. So I said, I think, I'm, I mean, I'm ready to move on with the, the vote.
All right. So we have a motion by Counselor Manke and a second by Counselor Geary for option two to move forward without the two pieces of land. Claudia, could you poll the council?
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counselor Manke?
Aye.
Counselor Chin with?
Nay.
Counselor Payne?
Counsel Payne?
Aye.
Counsel President Garvin?
Nay.
The vote is three to two.
All right, so motion passes to direct staff to draft an ordinance approving docket G-120 and G-320, adopting the housing needs analysis and economic opportunity per the Planning Commission's recommendation without the land need associated with specific site needs and retail leakage identified in the current economic opportunity analysis.
Yes, and we'll bring that back to you for your November 14th meeting because we will need to go through all the documents and make the changes and develop the findings.
And of course, it could be voted down then.
Yes.
All right. Thank you for that and your presentations tonight, Director Richards. That brings us to the end of our city council meeting, and I will adjourn tonight's meeting at 9:51 PM.